With the addition under new business.
I'll second it.
That motion was by Jenny, seconded by Scott. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Any opposed and that motion carries. Public comment. Wayne? Here he is. Uh, we are limited by about three minutes for your presentation this evening. So if you take longer than that, we'll have to boot you out, Wayne.
Okay. Uh, thank you for having me. I'm Wayne Mauller. I'm the service officer for our local American Legion post two oh six here in Wyndham. I'm not sure if you've ever noticed, but on holidays, there's no American flags flown on the square in Wyndham. That's been for several years now. I'm here to ask the city council to consider one of the departments, probably the electrical department, to consider putting them up for somehow, for some of the holidays. And I asked Marv Grunick a while back on who puts the flags up or who did. And he came back to me and he says that, um, he really didn't know, but it wasn't the city's responsibility. But he thought it was the Boy Scouts that did it. So I did some re- research and sure enough, it was the Boy Scouts that done it. And since we don't have a Boy Scout troop in Wyndham anymore, that program kinda went away. I found the flags that are put up in Wyndham during the holidays and they're, um, currently at Mitch Van Norman's house. He was a scout leader at the time and he helped me find the flags. And some of the flags are in pretty bad shape, some are frayed and some of the poles are bent. And some of the brackets that are around the square on the streetlight poles are either missing or broken. I guess the main thing we need from the city right away is to try and fix those, um, brackets on the poles. And I would hope that the electrical department would take that and go with it. And as far as replenishing the flags that are bad, Mitch's daughter Ava is gonna use that for a uh, senior project in school. She's gonna go out and ask for donations to get the flags redone. And if the city is not willing to take part in putting the flags up, Mitch and Ava would consider volunteering their help to do that. But I really think the city's responsibility to put them flags up around the city, just like other cities in the area. So I'm asking, I don't know if the city council has to approve it or not, but I'm asking the city council to ask the electric department to consider putting them flags up in some of the holidays, especially Memorial Day, Fourth of July, Labor Day and Veterans Day. And as a veteran and a citizen of Wyndham, I would think that the city would wanna step up and do something like that. Thank you for having me and I hope that you can consider it.
Thank you, Wayne. I, uh, for myself, I'm gonna make a comment that I definitely think this should be considered by the council. It's not on the agenda as an action item this evening. And I would like the, uh, council to be able to think about your, your comments tonight and bring it back in two weeks. Does the council have any comments prior to doing that?
Well, thank you, Wayne, for finding the flags, cuz I've been looking, but I couldn't come up with them. So, uh, thanks for doing that. I think, uh, they should be up. I don't, I wouldn't want to designate a specific city department to be responsible. I'm sure that they would, the electric could replace the holders, but I'm not sure that I would necessarily agree that the electric would be responsible for putting them up. It probably would be better if, uh, there was a volunteer group that did it. And it just would make it easier all around.
Other comments? Nope, and I understand that and that's why I'm asking time for staff and the city to consider this. And, uh, you know, I'm in, I'm totally in favor of having the flags put up. Um, I think the city of Wyndham misses that. In our residents, in our veterans and, uh, multitude of reasons. But, um, there are people that I think it needs to be discussed. I believe, when's the next department head meeting, Steve? On the tenth? I'd like the, uh, department heads to talk about it. And, uh, see if we can, uh, resolve this. Or in the meantime, uh, you know, look at all our options, volunteer groups. Uh, maybe we can have a lead from the city department, maybe someone a volunteer, they haven't been asked. And I think it should be discussed. If that's fair enough with the council? Okay? Okay, thank you for your comments tonight.
Got it, I got a, Wayne, um, does a legion have a place where they can buy flags at a reasonable price?
Well, I know, um, place I worked at when the flags got ragged, we'd take them down and we'd take them to the, then it was a VFW. And they would replace it. The flag, no charge, and then they would destroy it also. And I'm assuming they had a place they probably did buy flags.
Okay. Council good on that one? Alright, thank you once again. Okay, department heads. You won't be ducked and paid for that, Wayne. Any other, uh, department heads? Okay. Uh, twenty twenty-five city budget. The council, uh, put together a budget that, uh, I think is viable, durable and consistent with our, our goal to keep the tax rate, uh, for the city of Wyndham residents lo- uh, lower. And, uh, I think we made that, uh, uh, goal. And this evening, Steve will, uh, lead the budget presentation. So whenever you're ready to go, Steve?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I got some, uh, slides that summarize the, uh, budget information. Um, the website was updated this morning. Apparently when the packet went out last late, or middle of last week, there were some pages that didn't scan, so it got, uh, redone and put back out, but. Alright, so, um, enterprise funds, I'll go through these first. Enterprise funds are business-related activities where they, uh, have a good or a service and sell that good or service and are self-supporting. Uh, these are telecom, water, wastewater, electric and liquor funds. Telecom fund, same kinda as usual. Uh, we try to budget conservative on our revenue and, and on our expenses. So, uh, this fund does show that we may have a little loss. Uh, we budgeted last year, it showed a little bit of a loss, but we're gonna come in pretty much right on budget or actually a little in the black as we've done the other years, so, um, this is pretty consistent, but. Uh, water, uh, we're having, uh, same type of thing here, we're doing a little bit better on water. And in this, uh, budget, we've get, taken about one point three million, our expenses are a little over, or a little under, um, one point three at one point two five million. We have some capital outlay, uh, debt service payment, and then of course you add back in depreciation because it's not a cash expense and you're paying your debt service and those, uh, and other line items, so we're showing a, a positive number for that. Uh, the utility commission, uh, did, um, increase our water rate by four percent just to keep up with inflationary pressures, chemicals and labor and, you know, all the things they need to buy for that. Uh, wastewater, very similar. Uh, this number on revenue is, and expenses are actually down quite a bit from prior year because we don't have high life anymore. Um, so that took away forty percent of our flow. So which takes away from our revenue, but also does take away from our expenses. And here we've got, uh, about one point seven million of revenue, about million nine five of some expenses, a little capital outlay, some debt service, which is for that wastewater treatment plant, and then adding back depreciation. We do show that we will have a, a positive net budget there by a little bit.
Steve, my question on the, uh, on the debt service, is that, uh, consistent with the two million dollars that were paid? Off on that, Steve, did that impact that number at all?
Yeah, the, uh, debt service did come down, um, quite a bit due to the high life, um, payment that we got from the Department of Employment and Economic Development. That two million dollars that we got for their share of the debt, we could prepay this loan, so that two million went right to our balance of the loan. So we had quite a, um, good chunk of that paid off. Uh, that loan is at one percent, so it's a fairly good loan anyway, but, um, that debt service number, yes, did come down because of that. Yep, thank you, Mayor. Um, electric fund, uh, here, we've got about six million of revenue. Um, there's an anticipated use of a little over a million dollars in reserve funds. Um, that's primarily due to some large capital projects. Um, there's planned a meter, um, replacement project in there, there's a couple of large trucks that are in there. And then our normal undergrounding that we do of the system every year, that's about four hundred thousand budgeted for that, so that's why you see a fairly large capital outlay number there. And the new to this fund is, uh, transfer for debt service because we built the new, um, generation plant, the truck shed and replaced the transmission line. We spent down the cash, uh, that we had been, um, piling for, or saving for those projects. And, um, we did take out a bit of a loan of about six million dollars for that generation plant. And so we're starting to pay debt service on that. Uh, it'd be interest this year and principal and interest next year. And so that's why this number at the bottom is a four zero essentially, uses much revenue as we needed, or of reserve that we needed to make that account balance. Uh, the liquor fund, uh, revenue of about two and a half million, expenses of about two point, it's up on my screen, two point three million. Really? Is it disappearing off that one too? Okay. I don't know why, what's going on. It's up on mine. Anyway, um, two point three million of expenses and there's a transfer to the general fund and transfer to debt service in this one as the new addition has been built. Uh, we will have debt service on that, there was a five hundred and forty thousand dollar, um, bond taken out for that. So we have debt service, a little bit of capital and then depreciation. And so that fund does have a little bit of a, a cash balance in it as well for this year. Uh, general fund, these are, um, basically the activities that, uh, receive tax support. Uh, mayor council, elections, city office, planning and zoning, city hall, building, police, fire, emergency management, animal control, streets, health sanitation, rec and parks. Um, in that budget, that budget is about three point four or five million. Uh, that is for operations, that's, does not include the, um, capital that we'll get to on another slide. Uh, that number is up three point two percent from last year and so that's just basically a reflection of labor and other, um, inflationary costs for services. The capital, I'm sorry, that's a little small, the capital in this, uh, there's four hundred and twelve thousand dollars of capital that was funded by the council, the big ticket items in here. Uh, there's a fire tanker truck, um, the council put a hundred and sixty into that budget last year. Uh, the truck is about, well, you'll hear from Ben in a little bit, is, oh, between two eighty and two ninety. Um, so the council put a hundred and twenty in this year to make that up to two eighty, which was the price of the truck at that point. Um, another big ticket item in here is, uh, the streetlights, the council put a hundred and seventy seven thousand towards replacement to those traffic signals at Tenth Street and, um, Highway sixty seventy-one, which was our initial match from MINDOT that we're still debating over. Uh, but the council did fund our initial amount and, um, other things in there, there's a couple of, um, there's a street, uh, equipment reserve fund, there's twenty five thousand in that. One of the other things that goes under the street category, but, um, the council funded four radar speed control signs for Highway sixty. And that was something that was discussed with MINDOT to address some of the speed issues. And it was something the council had discussed months before that, cuz we recognize the issue as well, so, uh, you put that in your budget. Then there's a couple of things for, uh, PD, speed trailer replacement and their body camera, and that's a five-year, um, replacement schedule there. Uh, a storage building for the Wyndham Recreation Area. So those are kinda the big things in there. Um, one thing we do have in there, it doesn't show up as a real big ticket item on this slide, uh, is we're gonna be working on a refresh of the city website. Uh, we've estimated that's probably gonna be about a fifty thousand to sixty thousand dollar project. The reason you see fifteen in this is this is the general fund share, what's paid out of the tax revenues. There are other portions of that, um, update will come from the enterprise funds. And so that's our piece of it, is, uh, that fifteen that's in there. Then we get to special revenue funds, special revenue funds are, uh, the operations, the departments that generate some revenue on their own, but not enough to be self-sufficient, so they're partly, um, paid by, or partly funded with fees that they charge for their services and partly funded through, uh, tax support. And so the tax support for the library is budgeted, uh, for two hundred and ten thousand, airport for thirteen thousand, zero for the ambulance, they are self-supporting. Just short of a hundred thousand for the pool, three hundred and seven thousand for the arena, a hundred and eighty thousand for the, um, Economic Development Authority and about two hundred and fourteen thousand dollars for the community center. And this is for operations, there's a little bit of capital that they'll have and that's on another slide. Um, the total between the capital and the operations for the special revenue funds highlighted there is about a hundred and sixty five, or one million sixty five thousand dollars. And so this is kinda the overview of it, so they will take in revenues of about one point four million. They then will have, and most of that is ambulance, just full disclosure, it's over eight hundred thousand of that is ambulance. Then the tax levy, less their expenses, debt service, that's what we're paying off on the ICE system for the arena. And then there's forty two thousand of capital outlay that's being charged or going against the property taxes. The rest of it, um, there's a fairly large, um, two large capital purchases for the special revenue funds, three hundred and seventy five thousand dollars. And that's going for the ambulance, that's a replacement of an ambulance rig and some new radar, uh, radio equipment, but they're paying that out of their reserves, it's not going against the tax levy, so that's why it's not showing on, on this slide, is impacting the tax levy. Uh, these are the three projects for the special revenue funds that do impact the tax levy. Uh, there's a match for the crosswind runway design out at the airport. Um, that's a ninety percent federally funded project, five percent state, five percent us. Library, uh, they got some roof repairs and some sidewalk repairs they're planning on, and then a computer replacement at the library. So that's what totals at forty two thousand, four sixty-four. And then we've got debt service, these, that's what the, um, tax levy is paying for from previous projects. As I mentioned, uh, we had the ICE system in there that's showing on, on, on there. It's not double counted, it's just showing on this different slide. The emergency services building, we're still paying on that building. Uh, the twenty thirteen street project, we've got a hundred, a hundred and eleven thousand dollar payment, Seventeenth Street project, ninety two thousand dollar payment. And on the twenty twenty street project, that, which is our most recent one, uh, we have a hundred and sixty two thousand dollar annual payment on those. So our total general fund debt service, uh, levy is five hundred and eighty six thousand dollars for those, um, projects. Um, and then we have the miscellaneous projects, and these are generally TIF projects or tax abatement projects. Um, also in there is the dilapidated housing program, that's for tearing down, um, structures. Um, that budget, um, comes in about eight hundred and eighty three thousand of revenue and as I mentioned, most of that is TIF, um, revenue that's coming in, and then seven hundred and sixty five thousand expenses, so then there is a positive balance in that fund. Um, and then as the note states, if there's excess dollars in those TIF funds when the projects are closed out, those dollars go back to the county and then they get redistributed to all the tax and jurisdictions. So the city, county and school district would get a portion of those if they're returned. You had a question, Mayor?
I did, uh, back one slide, please. On the dilapidated housing program, I believe there was twenty thousand dollars that was added to that.
Yep, the council's putting twenty thousand into it, yes.
And I just wanted to, uh, bring this up because it wasn't pointed out by yourself, is that it was agreed to by the council that money could be utilized, um, for some of the nuisance type issues that may come up, is that correct?
Yeah, that, that's correct, yeah, it's coming up in another slide too.
Okay. Thank you.
So this slide is, uh, so in twenty thirteen, you've seen this one before. Um, in twenty thirteen, the legislature, uh, state legislature, um, passed a law to exempt cities from some s- sales tax on purchases. Um, it applies to most of our activities. Business activities like the liquor store, telecom, electric, don't get that tax exempt status, but water, wastewater, parks, rec, they do. So, and then like, um, arena, community center, the, depends on what they buy and what they use it for, whether it's tax exempt or not. If it's something that's bought for resale, it's not tax exempt, but if it's for use of, like, just general, like a table for the community center, that's, then ta- that's not taxable, so. Um, and so in that, we kinda look at our budget and then we estimate how much, you know, sales tax we would be saving. And this, our estimate for, estimate for this year is about fifty one thousand that will save us in sales tax, um, for the year, so. And then just to kinda summarize, the, uh, budget for the, uh, to- total property tax levy, about five hundred and sixty four thousand dollars is gonna go to general fund operations and that was that laundry list of police and fire and city hall and, and all those things go into operations. Uh, four hundred and eight thousand, it's actually four hundred and twelve, there's a, uh, transfer forty five hundred dollars that we're still tracking down, but, uh, four hundred and eight thousand of that will come from the tax levy, uh, for those general fund capital projects consisting of like the fire truck and the traffic lights and those things. Um, a million twenty five thousand is gonna go to the special revenue funds to support their operations. Forty two thousand more for the special revenue fund capital, uh, projects that were outlined. That five hundred and eighty six thousand to the debt service. Um, and then like later in your agenda tonight, uh, there's a, a property tax abatement request for that. So what we have to do is we have to have a levy for that property tax abatement, cuz they pay those taxes and then they get rebated back to the property owner, so. Um, so we have a number of those outstanding, so that estimate's thirty seven thousand is what's in our budget. And then we have the twenty thousand dollars for the dilapidated, um, housing program, there's some dollars in that fund, but the council did choose to add another twenty thousand to it this year so that you could use it for other nuisance type cleanups, things if you so choose, so. And then just this slide gives you a little bit of history on our tax levy for the last fifteen years. That kinda shows, um, our, you know, pattern. It averages three point six six percent over the fifteen years. Um, you can see there's a high of seven point six nine percent in twenty twenty-three. And then in in twenty fourteen, it was a zero. So that's the high and the low in, in that range. So. And then on the next slide, so this one, uh, when we set our preliminary, uh, tax levy back in September, uh, the city council settled on four point eight one percent for the city of Wyndham and you can see that's what's highlighted here. The other communities listed on here are peer communities as determined by the Coalition Greater Minnesota Cities when they did a, uh, study for us. So what I did is went to the state's website and polled what all of their preliminary levies were, cuz you kinda see what your peer cities are doing. That's all this is really for. And you can see, um, Princeton, they had a sixteen percent preliminary levy increase. The low is four point one in Cannon Falls and we were four point eight one, which was the second lowest of all the peer cities. Now, this is not their final, this is their preliminary, but it gives you an indication kind of where we fell in, uh, in our budgeting and what, uh, we're looking at with others as compared to other communities. And this one, again, it is a little harder to read, I'm sorry about that. These are the same peer communities and so what I've got is on the screen is population, tax capacity, but the, really the column that's labeled city tax rate. That's the property tax rate, it's kinda like the mill rate that the county, um, puts on their taxes for cities, the city's tax rate. Ours is in black at the bottom of the screen, you can see it's at po- five seven point four seven, um, zero. And all of the peer communities are on their city tax rate, and then I also have a total tax rate. The total tax rate is city, county and school district. Cuz some jurisdictions, like in Rock County, the county runs the library. The city doesn't pay for the library, the county does. So if we wanna say, hey, let's compare to Laverne, well, there's differences in the services that are provided and who provides them. So looking at the city tax rate doesn't give the whole picture, that total tax rate kinda gives you a more of a total picture. So when you look at total tax rate, um, our Wyndham, our total tax rate of nine seven point two six is actually second lowest of all the communities that have been identified as our peer communities, uh, which is good. Our tax rate, the city's rate of five seven four seven, we're seven, there's seven that have more higher tax rate than us and there's five cities on this list that have it less than us. So we're, we were in dead center last year, we moved a little bit lower this year, so. Again, that's more for a comparison for you all, so you know where we're standing. And then this last, uh, next to last slide is, um, our budget reserve. And these are the funds that we've got essentially in your savings account. Um, this, the state auditor, uh, recommends thirty five to fifty percent. Uh, this council set a number of years ago, a range for thirty five to sixty percent. Um, at the end of our twenty twenty-three year, so our audited number, against the anticipated twenty-five budget expenses, makes our fund reserve, um, fifty six point one percent. Now there are some other in your budget book, you'll see there's the same calculation is in there, but there are some other commitments that have been made such as the cul-de-sac or by the car wash, things like that, that will come out of that reserve number. So our net reserve number is essentially in that forty four point eight percent number. So we're still within our range and that's where we're at. Do you have a question on the reserve, Mayor?
Not really, I was, I was just trying to think of when Marv came on the council for the first time. Is, is that when it went up, because I believe Marv was instrumental in keeping that, uh, volume, uh, near that sixty percent or better. Just wanted to point that out. Mr. Grunick, so.
Yes, sir.
So when a Wyndham citizen comes and asks me, why are my taxes so high? What do I tell him?
It's a good question, but there, there's a lot, a lot of services that we have to pay for. You know, I've gone to other groups to speak, Golden K or some, uh, the other groups say, well, gee, well, you know, what can we do to reduce taxes? You look at what we're spending on those special revenue funds. Three hundred thousand for the arena, two hundred and ten thousand for the library, two hundred and fifteen thousand for the community center. If you look at those and say, I mean, those are amenities, it's not police, it's not fire, it's not some of the basic service, but they're amenities, they're needed in a community, you want to have those amenities, but they do cost dollars to maintain and run. And so I think the answer to the question is, we have to fund our basic services, but there's also a level of amenities that the citizens of this community expect and want, and those need to be paid for. And then when you do look at that, you know, um, level of service compared to other communities that are our peer communities, we're actually pretty well in the game there. And, you know, I know with differences in tax values and things like that, when the county adjusts tax values, that tends to have, you know, that effect of, oh my gosh, it's really high and, you know, that happens, but some of that is in our control, some of it is not in our control. But I think we just give them the information and it's, our budget is here, it's, you can look at it, you can see where all the money goes and, and where our tax rate's ranked. It's, you can look at it, you can see where all the money goes and where our tax rate's ranked. And that was, that was actually my last slide. So if council has any other questions, I'd be happy to entertain them.
Well, I appreciate all the work the council has done on this budget and working with Steve. There was three nights in a row that were very late. And I guess everybody got their fifty dollar per diem for those meetings. But still, it's a lot of work and information that the council had to go through and that's very much appreciated. Okay, I believe there's. Pardon me?
Public comment.
Yep. We are going to open this up now after the presentation. If there's any questions or comments that the public like to make, that public input now is open to the public. Wayne, we want to take the podium?
What about the streets? How much is that going to get fixed this year?
Jenny, this is yours.
Okay, we have been talking, the street committee, and we do plan on talking again here. We do have some priorities listed out and we've been looking. I think I hate to say for sure this is the plan, but what we're looking at right now is next year doing mill and overlay of certain areas. And then planning for, for me, my top priority right now is First Avenue, which is behind McDonald's, that I'd call it the service road. That's back in that area that is really falling apart and that has a lot of heavy traffic on it, truck traffic and, you know, delivering to all the businesses there. But that is something that takes some time to get the finances and get everything set because we have to give notice to all the businesses and if there's any residents, everything along there as far as what that's going to look like for their costs. And then have an open meeting, have them be able to come and, you know, discuss that before we move forward. So I don't think that First Avenue can get done next year. I think we're going to have to look at doing mill and overlay in two thousand and twenty-five, two thousand and twenty-six. Look at doing First Avenue is what I'm hoping. And then as far as Tenth Street through downtown Down River Road, that is also been a top priority on our list. And we did apply for additional funding to try to, you know, get more funding because that is like our most expensive road project. And we weren't granted that fund, that funds. So we haven't done that yet. What we're hoping for is those funds will become available again. We'll be able to apply for that grant again. Then if approved, we'd look at moving forward with that project. So the street committee here is going to be meeting shortly and like finalizing that. But I'll just put it out there that that's my plan going to the street committee. And hopefully we're on the same page. Dennis Esplin and I are both on the street committee. And we'll be talking with John Katzenberg. And hopefully we can get that plan moving forward and bring that to council very soon. So just so the public knows, that's kind of where we're, we have other, you know, roads and things on our list. But that's kind of our starting point for right now.
And one thing is, as we went through there, I think you've seen about four street projects that we're on. Are totaling six hundred thousand probably in total of debt retirement payments that are currently on the books. And a lot of these are probably twenty-year loans, Steve. Twenty-year, you know, so when one comes off, generally the city has historically, twenty-six would be the next one. So and then to add to that, when Jenny says mill and overlays, I'm assuming that you're talking about the, where the infrastructure underneath the street has already been replaced or fairly new, not aged, you know. So because I, you know, there's a lot of infrastructure underneath these streets that are going to be tore up. And the city wants to be responsible doing that and replacing the water, wastewater, other utility, storm sewer. In occasions, there's storm sewer that the council will have to talk about, you know, with the actual storm sewer. Some of that is flood-related items. So it's, it's quite complicated, you know, with the overall projects. But and it costs a lot of money. And I, I think that's where some hesitation is. It costs a lot of money. And how much does the, do we want to put on the taxpayers? Because for your frontage, you pay for that street to a certain degree. And it's been historically that, you know, and maybe you want to explain a little bit, no, he doesn't want to.
I, I, I think it's just important to note, the three things that Councilmember Quaid mentioned are probably going to be between eleven and twelve million.
Good point. And. Yeah, McDonald's.
We'd look to McDonald's all the way to Shopko. And the thing with that is, you know, there's some businesses along there. But then when you think about some of that, you know, normally when you go down like a street where residents live on, houses on both sides of the street all contribute to that. Well, when you're looking at, at First Avenue where we're at, most of those are businesses. And then some of that long stretch from our Veterans Memorial Park out to Shopko, pretty much, the other side is all state highway. So the state doesn't pay us anything for our improvement to that road. So that's all our responsibility. So that's where there's extra cost in that.
Good question, complicated answer. Other public input. Department heads, if you have input you want to make on the budget, you can. I don't see any jumping. Tiffany gave me the thumb up. She's not being recorded, so she can do that. Okay, yes, Marv, Mr. Groening.
My question is, where is Shopko? Is that the elite? Is what you mean?
Yes. The building formally knows as Shopko.
Okay, final call for public input. Okay, that part of this is closed.
And then your next meeting that will be the vote on the budget.
Yep, the, the final vote on the budget will be at the next meeting. So with that said, we have the fire truck, the tanker order approval of which was in the budget. And Ben has some additional information on this. I would like to see the council give the authority to make that tanker order and give Ben the approval. That would be my intent this evening. As he'll explain, it's his most needed piece of equipment ASAP and it has been. I'm supportive of it. Now you need to convince the council how important it is.
Thank you, Mayor. Ben Derrickson, Wyndham Fire Chief. We've, we've talked about this tanker for probably the last six-plus years on how it needs to be replaced. It's gotten a lot worse the last few years with leaks and reliability and that type of stuff as well. Like, like the mayor said, and I believe Steve brought up earlier in his presentation, last year you guys approved a hundred and sixty thousand towards this truck. This year in your preliminary budget, you do have another hundred and twenty thousand approved. Gets us to two hundred and eighty thousand. Back in October, we were really close to that number. We were two eighty, two eighty-three, six eighty-eight is what it came in back then. I got a price in, or updated price on it the end of, or end of November, rather. And unfortunately, it has gone up already. We're up to two hundred and ninety-three thousand, nine hundred and sixty-eight dollars. Typically, these truck manufacturers do have increases anywhere from two to four times a year. Unfortunately, we hit one of them already. Doing a little digging and trying to figure out how we can come up with this other short twenty thousand dollars that were short. I started looking at what we've spent on our grassland truck and where I think we're going to come into that when we're done. Last year, you gave me thirty-four thousand, five hundred dollars to finish that truck off because I knew I didn't have enough. I didn't know exactly how much I needed, but you guys granted me that thirty-four thousand, five hundred. I'm estimating that once we're done with the grassland truck, we're going to spend about sixteen thousand of that thirty-four, five. So that leaves us eighteen, five left roughly. So you put all three of those numbers together at two hundred and ninety-eight thousand, five hundred dollars. The cost of our truck right now is two hundred and ninety-three thousand, nine hundred and sixty-eight thousand. Basically, there's a forty-five hundred dollar slush in there that we are over above the cost of the truck. So what I'm asking for you guys or from you guys tonight is to basically sign this contract this week yet so that I can lock this price in before we do have another price increase. When that will be, I, I don't know. Obviously, they don't tell me when they're going to increase the prices on us. It could be the end of the month, it could be three months from now. Another big factor in this does lay on that Hyman Fire right now has two or three chassis left of the ones that they have ordered. Now, if those chassis are gone before we put our order in, our costs could go up again. Talked to them two days ago, they still had, I believe it's three of them sitting there. That's what I know right now. Take questions, comments, concerns?
One comment I'll make is I think the fire department has done their due diligence in building out that wildlife truck or grass rig. And you were here, you've shown the council that. A lot of that work was done in-house and by our department, finding reasonable cost to do that, knowing they had a budget to finish it out. I've seen their due diligence and the support that, and the council has on what they've taken out of the Fire Relief Association in putting towards some of this equipment. And I would encourage the city council to forward fund this. I guess you'd have to say forward fund it at this time. And, you know, anticipating the approval of the budget, which I highly think that'll happen. But it's up to the council whether you consider this request. But my recommendation to the council would be to act on this and give the authority for Ben to, to purchase that. And I'm open for other council comments or questions for Ben.
I'll make a motion to, to have you go ahead and, in order to this, this truck as long as the finances and as in order, as you said, so.
Councilmember Esplin, I would make that part of your motion is to move the excess funds from the grass rig to the tanker truck as part of your motion, if you want to do that.
Okay, I'd make the motion to move it from the grass rig to the tanker truck as part of this motion.
I would second that.
Motion made by Dennis, seconded by Marv. Any discussion or comments from the other council members? The council worked hard to fit that into budget, I'll tell you that. So they did a great job and I'm going to call for a vote on that. All in favor, signify by saying.
Mr. Mayor?
Jim.
Any chance of having any surprises come up after it's ordered?
You know, we, I think we've changed the specs on this truck about four times. We've, we actually just met again last week and went through the specs again. The specs are about twenty pages long. Well, twenty pages on the chassis and then there's another twelve pages on the body. We've been through it, we've, we've changed what we needed to. Some, some of the changes have increased, some of them have decreased to try to stay within the budget that we, that we had originally or that we were trying to hit. I don't foresee any changes at all on this. The only thing that I would see is, is if in the last week, they sold those two or three chassis. And obviously, if they did, we'll get a new price factor and we'll come back at that point and, and readdress it at that point.
Answer your question? Thank you for the question, Jim. Okay, motion has been made and seconded. Any further discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye. Any opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Sign it and send it in the mail tonight. It's been a long time coming. I appreciate all the work that you have done and your whole department in going through this to make it as affordable as we can.
Thank you, guys, for letting me do this a little bit early. I think it's going to help us in the long run so we can lock this price in. So thank you very much.
The fire chief did offer to put all the specs in your council packet and I told him that was probably okay.
I wouldn't understand him. Okay, next Tiffany's going to come up. I bet we could have this done before she got up here. We, we've done this. How many times, Tiffany?
Sometimes it feels like all I do. It's what I've got coming before council about every time right now, which is good. We've got a lot of new homes that are being put in. Really nice to see the program getting used, especially as we're getting at, you know, the point that the first ones are coming back onto the tax rolls. This one does have a little bit of an interesting quirk to it. You might recall, we had one out there on Bud Road, actually a couple of months ago here that we went through, we got it approved for preferred choice homes. And the individual that preferred choice homes was going to be constructing that home for actually decided they would prefer to be on the other side of the street because the, those lots are about four feet wider. So it allows for a larger garage. So this is kind of a switcheroo. On the one that was approved earlier this year, we don't anticipate that one being developed within the year. So if, if it were to be, then we have the tax abatement already active. If it is not constructed within a year, then the developer would need to come back at that point in time. Right now, we foresee it basically being a switcheroo for full disclosure. So this one is for nineteen forty-six Bud Road on behalf of preferred choice homes. We're underneath the three hundred and twenty thousand dollar cap on the program at a estimated market value of two hundred and ten thousand. So we're looking at a single-year tax abatement of four hundred and ninety-six dollars and a total five-year tax abatement of two thousand, four hundred and eighty dollars based on this year's tax rates. So request is to call for a public hearing on December seventeenth to discuss that application.
That number is different than what you've got in the memo. It's on the screen behind you.
Yeah, it is different on this one.
I believe the amount, the amount on the, the one on the screen is correct because the other one, this is with the developed lot, the other one's probably undeveloped lot.
That's the amount that we, we did on the, on the previous one because I recall that from a couple of months ago. Thank you for pointing that out. So we're looking at five years, six thousand.
Okay, is the resolution correct in the advertisement? Everything on there is correct, Steve?
Yeah, it does, it doesn't have, it doesn't reference the, the price or the amount. It's just the property and the call for the public hearing. And that's where you're at, is calling for the public hearing. for the public hearing.
Yeah, my apologies. I was looking at the county values.
Yeah.
Was the issue there.
Yep, thanks.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Uh, if the council understood that, someone care to introduce the resolution calling for the public hearing on, uh, what's the street number? 1946?
1946 Bud Road.
Bud Road. Okay?
I would introduce a resolution calling for the public hearing for, uh, proposed tax abatement on 1946 Bud Road. I'll second.
Resolution introduced by Marv and seconded by Jim. Any other questions or clarifications?
Um, just one. Uh, when we had our last tax abatement out there, there had been a question from Jenny about how many lots were still available. Uh, I did look into that since I was coming back with this tonight, and there are seven lots remaining. So there's four, uh, on the west side, three on the east side. So, just so that the council's aware. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Steve, let's do a roll call.
Yes.
Esplin.
Yes.
Benson.
Yes.
Quaid.
Yes.
Nelson.
Yes.
Very good. Thank you, Tiffany.
Thank you.
Next, we have a street closure request. This is from American Lutheran Church. Uh, they are having a living nativity, uh, on December 11th. The closures were, uh, the street closures were referenced, uh, Ninth Street and 10th Street?
Pro- Prospect between 10th and 10th.
Nineth and 10th, okay. And, uh, that is on December 11th. And, uh, in the packet was the approval letter from the department head, the street department, and chief of police. Appreciate that. Council wished to take action.
I would make a motion to approve the street closure of Prospect Avenue between 19th and 10th Street on December 11th from 5:00 to 7:30, and also thank the American Lutheran Church for continuing this annual event.
I'll second it.
Motion made by Jenny, as stated, and seconded by Scott. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed, same sign, and that motion carries. Highway 6071, highway safety improvement grant. Steve, I'm going to let you handle most of this, of this one.
Yep, thank you, Mayor. Um, at your last meeting, meeting with MnDOT, there was discussion about the possibility of applying for some grant funds to do the, um, roundabout at the Highway 6071 intersection on the south end of town. Um, this was through some dollars that the state had gotten from the federal government, um, but they have to go through an application process for it. It's the highway safety improvement, um, program. And so that application was due the 27th of November, and they were here on, I think, the 19th of November, so it didn't have a lot of turnaround time. Uh, so thanks to Tiffany for helping out and working on that. Um, also, thank you to MnDOT. They did the majority of the heavy lifting on getting this grant together and putting that, um, in process. Uh, what they required from the city of Wyndham were really kind of two things. Uh, one was the, um, letter from the council, um, supporting the grant application. And so, uh, that letter was drafted by the mayor, and we sent it to MnDOT so they could attach it to this application. And the other part you can see here is the local match, that $50,000 that's in there. Um, that would be coming from the city of Wyndham, but only because it's a 90, there's also a 90-10 federal match in this. So 45,000 would be coming to the city from that pot. We'd put 5,000 of our money with it to make the 50 and then go back to MnDOT into another pot. It's crazy the way it works, but that's the way it works. Um, so essentially, what you're on the hook money is, is $5,000 for this if it's funded. The entire project, uh, they estimated to be $4.25 million to build that roundabout on the south end of town. Uh, and so what they, uh, had done is they brought, uh, this was a diagram that was in the corridor study that was done a couple of years ago, and that's what they discussed with you all was to have the single lane roundabout. Um, that's what's shown, um, in this grant application. And in, I'm just looking for the, uh, I'm going to make, I was looking for the total, total cost, um, slide. Uh, let's see. Sorry for my slowness at finding this right one. Um, so, I had it paged marked earlier. It doesn't do any good now. I'm talking to myself, yes.
Are you hearing it?
You could, thank you, Jim.
I'm used to it, though.
You're used to it? Okay. Uh, but any, anyhow, that, so that's, those, those are the numbers behind it. Uh, it was turned in. The, the, um, letter support, uh, was attached to it. Um, within the letter of support, uh, there was, uh, two things. One is the match, and then the second one was, um, I did put in, um, with the mayor's, uh, consent, put in basically the criteria that the design and the final dollar figures had to come back to the council for final approval before the grant goes. So, um, so those are two things that would still need to be ironed out with MnDOT down the road if this grant is funded. Um, so that's kind of where we're at. This was more or less it for your information that it got in. We wanted to get it out, yeah, there it is, into the council packet so that everybody had a look at the grant application. I did find the funding slide, and here's the funding slide. So here's that 4.25 million, and then you can see this local match. Um, the, this is local highway safety improvement request by city of Wyndham for that 50,000. And then here's this local match furnished by the city, and that's at $5,000. So that's where those numbers come from. So, so this is done. So right now, this is where you're sitting. That grant application is being put in, and you can see in here, MnDOT District 7 has targeted this funding identified in 2028. That's what they've stated in this. I think they told you 27 or 28, depending on how that went, so. But they're targeting their 28 funding.
Uh, the way I read it, there was 27 mon- 27 money in there, or maybe that's just initiate.
They may have more than one pot of money, but, yeah. They may let it one year, but at the next year, uh, use two years worth of funding, but.
Okay.
So, but that's, that's, they just have, I just noticed in this paragraph, they noted, make 2028 in here. It's the, um, 28 requiring to 2027 to allow earliest possible delivery. So they're hoping to get the 28 money forward funding like you just did with the truck, right? So, but, so this was their grant, and so that was put in. So, um, just so you know. So if that, if you had anything else for, for MnDOT following up on your other discussion, but this was the one outstanding item that you had from your last meeting, so that's why this is in there. If you have anything else to discuss with that, that's up to you.
Council, have any comments? I'd, go ahead.
Can we step late, get our four-way back, four-way lanes back?
No, that's, that's up to you.
After the roundabout?
In this presentation, I mean, they, they said, uh, the first priority is to get the roundabout in. And then it's, uh, we'll see after that.
If you noticed on, if you noticed on their image, they showed four lanes coming in, two, two, two lanes in the roundabout and then going back to four lanes. That, that's what the picture shows, so.
Yep.
I like that. I, I've been in, around several roundabouts, and, uh, the ones I've got four, four-lane or two-lane roundabouts, I always seem to end up in the, in the wrong lane. And somebody's blowing their horn at me because I'm making the wrong move. So, when you got one lane, it makes it a lot simpler, I think.
One thing I, oh, Jenny, you had a comment?
Um, I just, in my notes, and I'm going to remember for the next time that we meet with them and when this comes, is that, um, when we discussed the roundabout, whether it was one lane or two-lane, they said before the project would happen, we would come back to the day, table and discuss one lane or two-lane options.
And that's why I put it in the letter that way.
Yes. So I figured that's something we need to all keep on our forefront so that when they come back, like many other times, when we say this is what was said, you know, and we need to hold them to that, and we need to have that discussion. Then I don't, I really don't think we're going to get anywhere with pushing for the four lane between now and this happening. They sounded like they were pretty set that we need to do the traffic signs, reduce speed signs on the roundabout before they'll consider anything further. So I think any other action on our part isn't going to, you know, matter to anything. But when this comes, that is the time again to step forward and say, let's get our four lane back with the installation of this roundabout and see where we go then.
A comment I was going to make, and it's more thank yous, is, um, I read the entire minutes word for word. I think, Steve, you did a great job writing the minutes, articulating what the, the, the council said at last, uh, two weeks ago meeting. And Mr. Larson, thank you for writing your article. It all, it very nearly matched Steve's, the, the minutes, okay? And for KDOM and their, uh, dissemination of the information, too. I think everybody is understanding it the way that it was written. And I just think that's excellent to, to have that as your record to fall back on, uh, for the next councils to come. Very good.
You know, my only concern, I guess, is when they start building it and the length of time it'll take them to build it, and where is that traffic going during that time?
They're going to route it by your house, Jim.
I'm available. I'm available. You know, my concern is, is if it isn't done within a, uh, Sixth Street hasn't been done that long ago, but with truck traffic going up and down there, it's going to tear it up. And going across the 62 bridge and going past the apartments up there. We just did that not too long ago, and that's, I don't know if it was, I don't know what kind of a road that was, if it was a, what tonnage, I don't know. I don't remember, I guess. But with all the traffic, you know, Jenny better put more aside for the streets.
You know, um, you bring up a good point. They only have a 20-year life expectancy in their proposal. I mean, they depreciate it out in 20 years. That's what I read as the lifetime of the roundabout. So, maybe I read it wrong. Scott?
And I also want to thank MnDOT for coming back to the table to talk to us. I mean, as much as we beat them up around here, and they're, they're beating us up, too, but took a lot of, a lot of gumption to come back in here and listen to what we had to say and, at least listen to what we had to say. They didn't really have to. They could just say, thumbs up, bye, guys. But I just want to thank them for coming to talk to us and hear us, what we have to say as citizens and council, council members, that we do our concern about what we got going on here. And with the accidents going on, we need something done, and maybe this time they'll do something.
Thank you, Scott.
What bothers me about it, I'm not a fan of roundabouts at all, I'll tell you. I've never seen one that I liked. And I first run into them back in the 70s when I was in Germany, and I hated them there, too. But, you know, I, I, common sense would tell you if there's a 30 mil, 30 mile an hour speed limit, you don't drive 60. I mean, you shouldn't, although I know a lot of them do. And I, I, you know, I just, like I say, I'm, I'm not a fan of them.
Point well taken, Jim. Okay, we are going to move along to the, uh, Burbach's aquatic pool inspection proposal. Wow, we got a 80% discount.
Yeah, so we actually got some good, good news on this one. So, um, Tim Hogan, our rec director, had been working with Burbach to get that inspection proposal. Um, they didn't have anybody come and actually visit it. They had this come out of their office. So that's why you saw a fairly high proposal the first time around, was they were, if you read through that proposal, it's like, wow, we have to pay for divers to come in and look at the bowl and all this kind of stuff. And it's like, it's empty. You don't need this. So Tim worked with them, um, pretty hard, and finally, I think, did get somebody to come by on site. They took a look at it, said, yeah, there's a lot of stuff here we don't need in this inspection. We can tell pretty easily from some of this. So they changed their amount on their proposal to, in that $19,000 range. Um, I did, uh, talk with our FEMA rep. He was in town again today. Asked Tim, he said, yep, they ran it up their flagpole, talked to all their higher-ups. They were nervous about the prior $97,000 cost as well. Uh, they were very pleased to see that this cost had come down. Uh, they did say that if the inspection is done and flood damage is found, then the cost of the inspection would roll into any repair or replacement project. So, um, the key there is if they find flood damage, which we're fairly certain they will, but that's their threshold, is if they find flood damage, it will then be covered. Um, so, but now we're not risking a $97,000 bill. We're risking a $19,000 bill. Still a lot of money, but significantly reduced risk.
Steve, what's the timing on them being able to do this?
It's whenever Burbach could get to it. And, and we're not sure. I don't know if they can do it in winter or not, because if they have to pump, you know, pump water through the lines, pressure test lines, things like that, the winter's not a great time to do it. Um, but I'll leave that up to Burbach and Tim to work out that schedule. I, I don't know what it is.
Okay, well, there's no water in the pipes to freeze anyway. That's all leaking out.
It all leaked out.
Right, so, okay. Okay. Um, for the approval on that, that'll come back, then? That, is that, do you want to do it now?
I think if, if you're willing to do it now, we'll do it before the price goes up.
Okay, is there a motion to, uh, authorize the Burbach's Aquatics proposal?
I'll make the motion to, for Burbach's proposal, for pool inspection.
I'll second.
Okay, there's a motion, uh, by Scott and seconded by Jenny. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. I suppose you'll have to go adjust the budget now.
We'll, we'll put this on our FEMA tab and wait for reimbursement.
Sounds good. Okay, uh, under personnel, park and recreation coordinator.
Pass.
Pass again? Okay. Community center, part-time on-call. There is a request that Tim's going to come up and tell us about.
Tim Snyder, community center director. Um, before you, I got an action item, um, for another on-call, part-time help position. Um, as the last one, we filled one of them here about a month ago. Um, good point is, is now we got our mom is going to come in as an on-call, part-time, too. Um, these are just people that want a few more extra hours, uh, here and there. Um, these people help us with the setup, takedown and, uh, for events and working at some events, too, as well. Um, Carrie Oltmans, uh, is her mother. Uh, last time I was here, it was Madeline Oltmans, her daughter.
I'll make the motion, I'll make the motion to hire the part-time on-call. I'll second.
Motion by Scott, seconded by Jim. Any discussion?
Do they have any more family members?
We hired the, uh, son a year ago.
Hearing no further comments. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And that motion carries. Good luck. And which is generator plant, Wilcon Construction LLC, payment number 13 for $28,500. So, are we all done yet?
We're really close. Um, as far as being done, I mean, all paint has been done. Um, punch list is, I think we've got two items remaining. Um, generators are up and running. Um, got a little bit of training to do. That falls under the... Got a little bit of training to do, but that falls under the Siegler contract for providing the generators, so, outside of the Wilcon thing, so. So yeah, this will take us up to 95%, which only thing left will be the 5% retainage. Utility, Utility Commission did review this and recommended the payment.
You heard right from the boss, council. You wanna make the motion to approve?
I'll make the motion to contractor payment, number 13.
I would second.
Motion Scott, seconded by Marv. Any discussion or comments? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye. Any opposed? And that motion carries. Is that it?
Well, what
One more, as long as you're up here.
What Steve has on there is a slight change order, $300 and $97, $397? This was for a door opener that was missed in design, or a door closer, excuse me. That was missed in design for the fire room, for the day tanks. I had a little dispute with this on labor costs to install a door opener. Our architect got beat up a little bit for missing it. They did agree to pay for half of this change order, the architect did. So, we're basically down to just the hardware, which we probably would have had to pay for had it not been missed. So. So that will come out of the general allowance construction, which is sitting at a positive number in our half of $9,958. So.
I don't see the change order on our agenda to act on.
Oh, it might not have been on the agenda. It was part of, part of pay request, let's put it that way.
It, it was, it was attached to the pay request. Council okay with that?
Yes.
Would you make a motion to approve the change order?
I'll make a motion to approve the change order for the door.
I would second.
Change order, a motion to approve that, and a cost of $397, is that what it was? By Scott and seconded by Marv. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye. Any opposed? And that motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
New business. We happen to have one. County Road 17. Steve, you had a handout for us?
Yep, there was a handout at your place on Monday. The county engineer sent me a request. They've got a project they're working on, on county state aid Highway 17, and I'll just read from Nick's email. It just said, the only thing that pertains to the city on this project is, been, I provided on the sheet that you handed out, is Station 0 to Station 21. That section of the road is in city limits, and there is a note that says the pavement will extend 15 feet from the center of the road. Currently, it's a 12-foot travel lane. They're gonna extend it three more feet, make it a 15-foot travel lane. So they're gonna be replacing the pavement and then adding that three-foot shoulder. The current shoulder is gravel. They think it'd be nice for bikes, walkers, things like that, to have that additional pave versus being gravel. And the three feet is pretty much all they can do without having to do earthwork on the side of the roads, ditch work, that kind of thing. So, they are asking for municipal consent, because this is partly funded from the monies they get from the state. They need municipal consent to do any work on the county roads within the city. And so there was also a MINDOT resolution that was in your packet to approve that work within city limits. There is no cost to the city for the project. It's covered by the county state aid funding.
Okay, and this is in resolution form. Pretty much stated as Steve said. Everybody okay with the resolution? Would someone care to introduce it?
I would introduce it.
I'll second.
The resolution concerning County Road 17, County Road 17 overlay, that the, within the city limits, was introduced by, was it Scott? Marv, and seconded by Scott. By Jenny. Steve has it right in the minutes. Any discussion? A roll call, please.
Esplin.
Yes.
Nelson.
Yep.
Grunig.
Yes.
Benson.
Yes.
Quaid.
Yes.
I have resolution carries. Any other new business? Old business? Council comments? Scott?
With cold and flu season coming on, as you can hear, I don't know where you're dying, but just, just check on your neighbors and be careful where everybody's going, because with everybody gathering up together, colds and flus and stuff is going around and stuff, so just be careful and let's have a good fall season, winter season.
Okay. Because I didn't have anything the last couple of times. I have a little more this time. Just a reminder, December 7th, Saturday, that there's a craft fair at the Bark. And December 14th, there's a craft fair at our community center. And so this is a good time to do shopping with local vendors. And also, we have a lot of people from out of town that'll be coming to town to do shopping with local vendors. So, we welcome them on those two Saturdays. Also, I wanted to say that if you haven't heard, KDOM is doing this Storytime, Monday through Saturday at 10:45, with local public libraries are reading a story. And I believe yesterday Nancy Saban from our local library was doing the reading. If you've never heard her read a children's book, you are in for a treat. I know during COVID, she did a lot of that, and I listened to her stories, even though they were kids' stories, but they're so much fun. She has so much life she brings to the story. But, so different library people from different towns will be reading different days at 10:45 on KDOM. So if people want to tune into that. And then also, I wanted to mention, because I did this last year, the reindeer races that are on KDOM, they start next week, because the winner, they pay the city of Wyndham electric bill for the person that wins that. So, I think it's just bonus to people in the city of Wyndham. If you can win the reindeer race, you could get your December electric bill paid. So I just wanted to mention that to our citizens. And then the other thing was, since last meeting, November 21st and 22nd, I attended the Coalition of Greater Minnesota Cities Conference in Alexandria. Went up there with Steve Nasby, and it was interesting to see, just to listen to all the updates, changes, legislative changes, things that they're looking forward on. Also, just to meet and connect with a lot of different city mayors, council people, city administrators. I had a good conversation with some people from Glencoe, talking about the Bitcoin data mining stuff up there. So it is just, you know, making that connection with people from other communities, because there are different things that happen within different communities that we can collaborate and talk about where things are at and what's going on within the different councils. So I feel like that was a very helpful conference to attend and to meet and reach out to people. So, that's what I just wanted to report on.
Thank you Jenny. Jim? Mr. Grunig?
Just thank Tim Hogan for looking at that Burbach Aquatics bed again, get it down 80%. I was just wondering if he was interested in looking at fire truck beds.
Good one, Marv. Dennis? Okay, my long list. Let me see. I really don't have much at all tonight. I will say that I do like this setup here with the tables across the front. I think this will be much easier for the new council as well, viewing the public. The school district liked it. They did the first trial on it. The only comment I had was to move it over here so they can do the controller stuff where Steve's sitting now. And so just a table. I, I, we don't like the triangular stuff. Steve, when I talked to him and noticed that, I said, can we afford to get a table? So, hopefully you can just have a single table by next meeting. Okay. Okay. Very good. And good luck to Steve. He's doing work on behalf of the city and the state out at the Simpos coming up in DC. Good luck with that. Anything else? Steve, do you have anything before we adjourn? Steve has nothing. Hope everybody had a great Thanksgiving. I know I did. And it looks like all the council members are very fed well. So with that, we'll adjourn by unanimous consent.